Good evening and welcome to the January 10th Select Board Meeting. I will call this meeting to order and if we could all start with the Fledge of Religions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with public comment but we don't have anybody here so we will move on to our first public hearing, which is a joint petition of the Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England to install a pole on Sutton Street. So I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we open the public hearing.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Four zero, we are in our public hearing. Do we have, I believe we have somebody on the call from National Grid?
That's me, Dave Boucher.
Hi Dave, how are you? Thank you for joining us.
Hey, good. Thank you. National Grid 1101 Trent Black Street, right here in North Andover. I'm here on a petition on Sutton Street. There's going to be a new senior citizen center that's being built at 481 Sutton Street. And what we need to do right now, currently there is only a single phase on the poles that are there and you're asking for a three-phase. So we need to run some heavier lines to replace the pole. And we're asking for a brand-new pole location across the street. And that's a stub pole that's going to support the heavy wires across the street as it's shown on the diagram that we've provided to the town. That would enable us to go forward. That's the only thing we need from the town at least for a location for a pole for this project. And if you see it fit, it will be hopefully approved tonight and we can go forward with that.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions from the board?
So David, it'll be located on the other side of the street, so it'll be an additional pole. And when you say a stub pole, does that mean it's, like, how high is a stub pole?
Normally we place stub poles at five feet shorter.
Okay.
So the pole across the street will be a 40 or a 45. We'll either have a 40 or a 35 for a stub pole. So it's a little bit shorter.
That's a big stub, yeah. I was thinking like a six-foot pole or something, but yeah, that's fine. And it will be standalone. It'll have some guide wires obviously to support it. But there's no residential over there. It's all part of the airport.
No, it's, yeah, exactly. It's the airport hangars or there's a few of them over there on the other side of the fence. Right now it's been staked out. There'll be a guy wire going down to an anchor approximately 12 feet from the pole. And I believe I placed the pole location approximately 12 feet off the road. So it's, you know, a little bit further than, there's a lot of room over there for me to do that. So that's what I did. I pushed it off as far as I could. And we're also on board, just to let you know, we're on board with the FAA as of today. They approved, okay, the work in their space. And I'm working also with Mike Miller from Lawrence Municipal Airport to help, he helped me a little bit to get this going with the FAA. And they approved it after going through with them. So we're trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is all the way so everyone gets what they need for this one.
That's a good idea. I was going to ask about that, but I think you got that covered.
Yep, yep.
Dave, how many wires are going to be crossing the street?
One.
Just one?
Yep, just a guy wire from pole to pole. If we need to, we can run some secondary over there. Live wires, if requested, to put a, you know, if we had to, for instance, put a street light on there or something like that. But as it is right now, all we need is the one guy wire going across the road, so.
No other questions from me?
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dave. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved? Sorry, a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
If it pleases the board, we can take the vote out of order. So Dave can go home or shut us off. So let's see. It would be under new business. Item A, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board to approve the petition of National Grid in Verizon, New England, pound sign 299-88790, subject to the conditions contained in the proposed order as presented. So there were some conditions in there from the pool lease, I believe. And I'm sorry, it was from DPW, right. So, and I assume that's SOP for you guys anyway, but just to be aware.
And please see you. Please see you?
What's that?
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Very good. Thank you so much, Dave. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You all have a good evening too. Thank you.
We are going to move on to licensing. The licensing chair is not with us tonight, so I will act as licensing chair. And I will entertain a motion to open the Licensing Commission.
Move, that we move into licensing.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We are in licensing. And our only licensing tonight is a public hearing for the application of a change of manager and change of stock interest. So I will, for 260 Winthropath. So I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing for the application of Sunjay, Inc., DBA Townmark, 260 Winthropath for change of offices, directors, LLC, change of stock interest, and change of manager.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in our public hearing and I believe Attorney Jill Mann is with us.
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well. I hope everyone else is doing well and had a great New Year.
Yes, you too.
So thank you. I think it's probably a bit of deja vu because we're here in early November for this application. And I apologize for that. It had not been advertised due to my error. Because there is a transfer, we did discuss the fact that there was a transfer of stock ownership. Basically that there are two current owners of Sunjay, Inc. And one of them is retiring essentially. So the only owner will be Mukesh Patel who's here this evening with me. And even though you've already vetted him, under the ABCC rules, they want us to re-advertise when there's going to be a transfer and the result would be an increase in anyone's percentage interest. And that requires not only the application we submitted and all the information we submitted, but the advertising. So we are simply here because we needed to go through that public hearing process. And so we are asking for, as you had noted, a change in manager going from Nitesh Patel to Mukesh Patel. A change in stock ownership going from a 50/50 scenario to 100% Mukesh Patel. And as a result of those changes, Mukesh will also be the sole officer, president treasurer clerk, and the sole director of Sunjay, Inc. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? No? No?
You're going to be very busy. You're going to wear a lot of hats.
It's very true.
Everything's in order. Everything's been cleared by the police and the building department and the fire department. So I think everything's in order. I don't have any questions. So if the board doesn't have any questions, I'll take a motion to move out of the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll move on to a vote for the change of officers, directors, and change of stock interest for 260 Winthropath.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board acting as Licensing Commission has approved the application for change of officer, directors, LLC, change to stock interest, and change of manager from Sunjay, Inc., DBA Townmark at 260 Winthropath.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. You are all set.
Thanks very much. Appreciate your time. Enjoy the cold. It's coming.
It is coming.
Oh, it's here.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
All right, that was a quick one. We will, I will take a motion to close the Licensing Commission.
So moved?
A second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. So give the gavel back to yourself.
Yes. All right, so we're on to new business. And it looks like our subcommittee has an appointment to the Festival Committee. Do you guys want to talk about Jim Fazio?
Jim Fazio has been part of the Festival Committee for many years, but somehow did not get included in our reappointments. And so we apologize for that and we are very happy that he has decided to continue to stay on the committee.
And it should be known that he's been volunteering on the committee as well during the different projects.
Oh, yes.
This is kind of an administrative oversight on our part. We didn't reappoint him last June.
He's a good worker. So I would, I would move approval. Unless, did you just do that?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome back to the Festival Committee officially. All right, that's all we have for new items. So we will turn it over to our town manager for a COVID update.
Sure. So obviously, we're still riding this unfortunate upswing after the holidays. As of Thursday, we were trying to report, it's usually Thursday's data. We put it on Friday. We had 322 cases. Of those cases, interestingly enough, the 91 of them are actually in the 30 to 49 age frame. And only 26 are 75-plus and 10 65-plus. So, you know, it seems to be kind of more concentrated in that middle age range. Not that I called myself middle age, but I did. You all heard it. It's concentrated there. So kind of an interesting change from what we were seeing before. We do still have quite a few cases amongst children. We have 16 that are ages zero to four, 28, five to 11, and 27 who are 12 to 15. About 25% of the cases are household cluster, meaning that we're seeing the cases spread through a single household. Not that unusual. We did have one additional death. So we are up to 93 deaths now since the beginning of COVID. And we have seen as a town 5,434 cases since we began. We are now having a change in our data because we're basing our case numbers off the five-day isolation. So while we're seeing 322, if we had been looking at this over the 10-day period, it would be a much larger number. And I think that's important to remember. We are seeing an average of about 55 cases a day. But at one point, we actually had 91 cases in a single day. So certainly more than what we had expected. What we are seeing, though, that is giving us somewhat confidence is that a lot of the cases seem to be Omicron. And while that is more transmissible than Delta, it has been seen to be less severe, particularly in people who have been vaccinated. So while that's not the rule for everyone, it is what the science is showing. We are encouraging people to continue to get vaccinated. There are now vaccinations available for people 15 to 19, which is an exciting change over the last few weeks. And town buildings, what we're doing right now is we're in a skeleton crew, meaning that we're trying to keep the fewest amount of people in each office in order to continue to operate because unfortunately, with how contagious this is, it easily will wave out an entire office, which we've seen happen. So we're trying to avoid that if we can. But we're all still here and the buildings are still open. Their senior center is not running any programming, but the senior center is open for people who need to come in or have an appointment. And they are making calls to the seniors that we typically see every day. There has been some questions about why the school data is different from the town data. And I think it's really important to, that look at it as two completely different data points. We're not looking at the same thing at all. The school data includes not just the students, but also the faculty. And it's the faculty that may not live in North Andover. So if we have faculty who live in Lawrence, New Hampshire, Methuen, Danvers, wherever they are, they're being included on our list, but you're not going to see them on our town data. And so it's going to skew the numbers. Additionally, they're looking at it on a different date than we are. So you have cases coming on and off all the time. And so while I know that can be frustrating, it's actually helpful to have data coming from all different ways. So that's where we are.
That's according to the state, so we're not the only community that's doing that.
Yes, yep. So what they're basically doing is anybody who becomes infectious is in isolation in the schools are being included on their list just so that they're reporting them out.
Nope. This sounds like a dumb question, but I guess I just don't really know the answer. Are they deciphering what could be the Delta variant or the Omicron variant? Or is it all being counted as the same?
So they're still doing the poll testing that they were doing before. So they test a certain percentage of all of the
Oh, that's right. We talked about this.
Tests, yep. But it's actually a really important point. So while we're reporting this, and while we're reporting this data of the 322 cases, these are the cases that have been reported back to us, right? So the cases that are in Maven, yes. So some people are not calling us when they're testing positive at home. If they are, right, we are adding them. If they are at schools, they're adding them, right? If they're coming in on a home test or they're through test and stay. But we're certainly not capturing everyone.
Are we requesting that people, so that's sort of a question that I have. Like, should we be encouraging people? I know our offices are overwhelmed. They're working really hard. Is it beneficial or not?
I think it's beneficial to call in. And we do have people who are calling because the COVID hotline has become, you know, I get those calls and they've ramped it back up. We certainly do have people who are calling and just letting us know. We're entering it into the system, so we have it. It's helpful in so many different ways. You know, someone calls 911, we have, we're aware.
Like, is there any, probably too much of an undertaking, but a way to like self-report that? Like for people to fill out a form?
We could create a Google form. I mean, we could definitely create a Google form that would come in. We have to figure out a way to
I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it hurts. I think it's one of the scary things about not having all the information. Before, it was a lot easier for us to say, all right, this is exactly how many cases we have because everything was coming in through Maven. And now they're accepting the home tests instead of requiring the PCR. So it really kind of skews the data.
And just based on what, like, I think we are in a community where when people see that it's six hours in line, they're not doing that. So they're testing repeatedly at home, getting a positive test, and kind of moving on from that.
Or both. They get the positive test and then they go and get a test from
A lot of people aren't, yeah.
People really aren't doing that.
They're getting the home test and that's it.
Yes.
Would it be counted twice or would it?
No.
Just once.
Okay, that's why I was saying it too, because that's kind of important.
A lot of people are just getting the home positive. Doctors, workplaces are accepting them now because they're so much better than they were before. One, and two, because it's very hard to get a PCR right now. A lot of the state sites were shut down.
Really actually much
I know. It's hard to be accurate.
Reporting them. They wouldn't even think to report them, you know.
And I think that's part of it too, is like nobody, I recently started to say to people, like, you should be telling somebody. You know, you should at least call your primary care. You can let your town board of health know. But I don't know if it would cause more of a problem to have people self-report. But I think people would be willing to do that if it was easy.
If they tell us, we do add it so that we have the information.
So we can encourage people to call.
Certainly. And we can add that, we can even add that to the bottom of our worksheet. But it certainly was not, you know, I think we all expected it to be a little bit up after the holiday. I don't think any of us really expected this. So, you know, we're watching closely, meeting with the state still. Just kind of trying to keep tabs on things and keep things open and running as much as we can, so.
So, and you and I talked a little bit, but I think part of the issue now is if we're only reporting on five days of data, you're missing that whole chunk in the middle, right? If somebody tests positive on Friday, then I may not even make it into the next
Thursday, yes. They may not make it into the next Thursday because they will be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Yep.
So
So we're looking at trying to do the data twice now instead of just the once a week in order to try to capture more people. With the two holidays, the data was all messed up because they weren't testing. So we weren't getting things in. And so that was making it really difficult for us to report. And I think that's one of the things that, for me, is hardest because it's difficult to quantify things when we're not always looking at the same data point. Like, it's very frustrating to go from a 10-day to a five-day.
Yes.
You know, and I think people need to realize there's really not as much contact tracing as there was before, unfortunately. It's, there's plenty of it still going on in the schools, which is fabulous. But the state is no longer doing their contact tracing. They've stopped that entirely. So we're just doing as much as we can. But when you're seeing 119 cases a day, we're certainly not able to get to all the close contacts like we were back when, the beginning.
Well, I will say, I think, like, the data, I don't know how much people understand, how much, those of you who put your time and effort into it realize how much people rely on it. And so we're very appreciative of all of the effort. You know, I, every day have people asking about it. So it's just been a huge resource. It's really hard for people to navigate the state website. So having it available to us on our town website, I can't even tell you how many people actually look at it. Probably more than once a day.
We're glad it's a good tool.
So thank you.
We're glad it's a useful tool. And we'll keep trying to get it more updated. I think once we have the new data point to work off of, it's going to make it a little bit easier.
Definitely. Well, thank you.
And the list that the town keeps and the school keeps, right, like, reporting, they're one document, right? Like, in the sense, like, I suppose, like, my own kids, for example, if they tested positive, you would pick that, the town would pick it up? Like, if it got reported to school? Would it, does it then transfer over to the town?
As long as it gets put in a Maven, so yes, typically.
Right, which is what the schools are
Yep, which is what the schools are using. It just wouldn't be the faculty.
Okay, right, because they're not necessarily, they may not live here, yeah.
Right. But for instance, if you had someone who tested positive over winter vacation, they may not have reported it to anyone.
Right, that's right. So, well, here's hoping that this is a short blip on the radar and
I'm hoping this is its last, last hurrah.
I hope so.
Experts have been talking about on the news. I think some of the really good reliable experts are saying that they're thinking mid-February it should start coming down unless there's a new variant. They didn't say that, but I think we've all heard that the next variant will be even more contagious, but even less serious. So I don't know. I don't know what you prefer. I guess less serious is always better.
Less serious, yeah. Is there any vaccine clinics coming up that we can?
So the Y has one coming up. We are working on doing booster clinic. So we'll probably try to do that in February. But the Y does have one coming up. And they are doing them again now at Fenway Park. So that's helpful because they're able to do large numbers. With nothing open, it was more difficult. So.
Is there any, I mean, Lawrence is, we're so lucky to have Lawrence as a testing site, but the lines have just been, is there any talk about opening up more sites? I had read, I think I had seen a headline that they were talking about looking at more sites or
I haven't heard anything on any of our calls about opening up more sites. Most of the calls have been more focused on the vaccine.
I read something today that said they were going to open something in South Lawrence. But I don't, I don't know too many. I mean, part of it is simply staffing, honestly. I know that the Lawrence General site could be running eight lanes if they could staff eight lanes they can't. So that's, you know.
And I believe they closed down all the walk-up ones tomorrow due to the cold. So we'll be behind a little bit.
They closed everything. For Greater Lawrence Family Health Center in Methuen, they will be open.
Yeah, Lawrence General's closed tomorrow.
And the LaFleur Terrier is closed tomorrow.
Yeah, negative 12 will do that.
No. I mean, these people are superhuman, but
They must be exhausted.
They must be so tired.
So long.
Yeah, I mean, it's simply like, if you're not feeling well, stay home.
Please.
You know, get tested, get backed, get, you know, do your part, I suppose, is the best way to put it. Thank you for that.
No problem.
Thank you.
We will get through it.
We will.
We're getting there. We're getting there. We are a strong community. We will get there. All right, we will, we just have a few consent items. We are accepting donations to the library. So we want to thank Robert and Agnes Pacific, Joe and Dennis Reynolds, the North Andover Pride Project, and Maria Mayer for their donations to the library. And we would also like to thank, oh, we don't have the names. There's no names, but we have two donations. Oh, was it in?
It's in the, on the line, online, in your document. If you read the header, it's in the RE section.
Oh. Did I miss it? I'm all messed up.
Sorry, I had a lot of time when you got to reading. In the executive session. So the first donation was for $500 from Sergio Panaris, Panaros. And then the second one was a $500 donation from Elizabeth Armstrong.
So thank you to both of them for their generous donation to the fire department. That will go for new equipment, I believe. And we are also accepting a Municipal Americans with Disability Grant in the amount of $52,000 for self-evaluation and transition plan. And from what I read, we haven't had one since 1993. So this is fabulous and so important for our community.
I've been applying for this grant for eight years. I've never received it before. So kudos to Andrew for such a great application. We're very excited. And it opens up a lot of grant opportunities for us by completing this.
And it's also a condition of our Housing Choice community. So we have to have them. So look forward to an update on that once we get that rolling. And we're also surplusing a couple DPW vehicles and equipment. So I will entertain a motion to accept those items.
I move that Select Board approve all the second ones.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. So thank you, everybody, for your hard work on the, on the grant. And again, thank you for the donations. And we'll move on to the approval of our December 13th open session minutes. Does anybody have any comments for those? Everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah, I didn't want to comment. I think in the executive session, there was no mention of my refusal from that. I think that should just be noted in there.
Whatever update that's made.
As amended. Motion as amended.
Yeah, sure. I'll make a motion that we accept the open session minutes from December 13th as amended. Yeah, sure. I'll make a motion that we accept the open session minutes from December thirteenth as amended.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Accept those. We don't have any old business. We'll move over to the town manager's report.
Thanks, I just have a couple of things. So we did have our twenty twenty-one employees of the year, so that was exciting. We had Tony Wolfenden, who lives from the health department, and John Wood, who is our lead communications officer. I, in all the years I've done employee of the year, I've never chosen two, but I just couldn't decide this year, so we went with the two of them, so we're really excited about that. We found out today that Lynn Savage in the town of the Andover received the fiscal year twenty-one distinguished budget excellence award for last fiscal year. So we're very happy. That's, I think, our twelfth year of receiving that, yeah. It's not, it's not an easy award to get, so we're very proud of Lynn for that.
Well, she knows how to do it now.
She does. She does a great job.
Twelve years of it. She's got it back now.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yes, she was very excited. She sent me the email this morning, so we're happy for her. I'm going to attend a school committee meeting on Thursday, January twenty-seventh for the continuing conversation regarding facilities master plan two. We're going to talk about next steps, including what has to happen in order to remove the project forward, how an override or debt exclusion would work, et cetera. And I'm happy to answer any questions that they have. And as you know, the planning board had requested that the town do a water demand report, basically doing an analysis of what new development has burdened our water supply, whether or not we have enough water, and that report is now finalized, and it's on our website. And we're actually going to be sending it out in the news tomorrow, so we sent out from Sarah Brush in our news tomorrow. But it was interesting read for me, but I'm sure everybody else will enjoy it as well, but the good news is we have plenty of water, so. It is good news. And that's all I have. Oh, one more thing, sorry. We, I forgot. The survey that we were doing for APA has been completed. They're currently doing the data analysis. We had three hundred and twenty-five residents in fifty-eight businesses take the survey. So they're going to be getting that data to us soon. We have moved forward with getting Powers and Sullivan as our accountant to help us with the reporting. We did that through MIPC as a kind of a conglomeration, which is exciting, because they'll be able to help us with some of the when they put a new interim final rule out, which I think is actually the final rule. We don't have to call interim anymore. And so it will be a lot easier for us to start spending that money now, so very exciting.
The employees of the year, is there, could you maybe elaborate why you chose them?
So Toni got quite a few, and I know everyone, anyone who comes into town hall sees Toni. She got quite a few nominations, and I thought they were so nice. One of them said that she's always cheerful, smiling, bright light at the entrance of town hall, and another one said that she has relentless good share and is an inspiration to all of us in her, with her commitments in North Andover. I think that's so true. Even during COVID, when we were down to twenty-five percent, if you came into this building, she was always here, all the time. And she's always greeting everybody as soon as they walk in, the first person to jump up to see if somebody needs anything. And so, you know, this is the second year in a row. We had someone from the health department, so they've really kind of stepped to the plate the last two years, but Toni's been like that, I think, no matter what. And then the other person is John Wood, and John is our lead dispatcher. I know a lot of people probably like, what's a lead communications officer? But he's our lead dispatcher down at nine-one-one, and he does kind of a little bit of everything for everybody. And that's kind of was what people were saying, that he's like a hidden hero down there that people don't usually see, but whatever you need in the police department, you go to John Wood. And so those were our two this year, and we were really excited to be able to honor them. So their names look on the plaque down in the first floor. Now we'll have three people instead of just one, which would be nice. And we will, they each get a plaque, and then they each get a gift card, so we're pretty excited about that, yeah.
That's a nice tradition to have.
We had a lot of nominations this year, so it's nice to see, and people get excited about nominating each other, which is nice.
That's like a great morale.
It is good, yeah.
Especially during this time. Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you for doing that.
No, happy to. They deserve it. Oh, and the water department won the wreath contest again, second year in a row. It was beautiful. It was hand-painted, like, I don't know if you've seen it, it was a hand-painted loon bird. It was, it was beautiful. It was hard to compete with, but we're all going to step it up next year, so they better look out.
Alright, any selectmen's update?
I just want to, and I know you agree with me, because we've talked about it, we want to throw out a thank you to DPW. It was the middle of January almost, before we had to get into the snowiness of it all, but they did a great job, so we appreciate that. It's not easy.
My kids even commented that you could see the pavement.
That's great. They were about to look at that.
Yeah, they did a good job. And tomorrow, everybody be safe. It's going to be like negative twelve out there. And the fire department put out some tips about keeping your pipes from freezing and all of that.
Do you have an outside wall with a kitchen sink?
Keep your cabinets open.
You got to keep your cabinets open.
And don't use a blowtorch to unfreeze them.
We don't want our fire department to have to be busy.
Well, I guess the only other thing, and Melissa touched on it, and so did Dee, that I clearly understand why we need to kind of limit people coming to the senior center, but having said that, and understanding that the staff is reaching out to them and making sure everybody's okay, and we worry about our children, but often our elderly live alone and have lost friends and relatives, so it can be a really trying time. So I guess what I would ask is, you know, check in on your neighbors, especially when it's so cold tomorrow, if they need anything. And just a friendly phone call or something, you know, as it is on the kids, it's been tough on the elderly, too, so. That's my only comment.
I just had one thing, maybe, and it's kind of a request. So the state just came out with this really nice website today that will give you your vaccination information, and you can print it out. And who knows, that might become something that we all need eventually, but I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the vaccine information page of our website, can we add that link on there?
Absolutely.
And people have a way of getting that information, so that, and it's got like some barcode or something like that, so.
Yes, absolutely.
We may have to carry it around with us at some point, but
Did they say you got a QR code with it or something?
Yeah, it comes with it. You can, like, just save it to your phone.
A snapshot of mine, I can show you.
You have to finagle a little to get your kids, but they're in there. It's just not easy.
Yeah, I had to finagle it to get my wife, because they didn't put the N at the end of her first name. Kathleen's, it was Kath Lee.
Oh, gosh.
And it has to be exact match.
Probably didn't have enough letters.
No, it has to be, yeah, it has to be an exact match.
I'll be in trouble with the hyphenation, no, always a problem.
Yes, they will, yeah. Well, that'll be helpful, because we forgot our kids' vaccine card, like, the first one, when they went back, so now we have two cards. It'll be helpful to have one card.
Keep the electronic copy.
Alright, so our next meeting is January twenty-fourth, right? Yes, so, alright, and one last thing.
Melissa, so the other boards, is, have most of them gone to Zoom or online meetings now, or?
Some have opted to go remote. Some of them have asked to still continue to meet in person. I know the ZBA, I think, is meeting in person tomorrow night, but I think planning board was almost entirely remote. I do know that some of our neighboring communities have either still in remote, never went back to open session, and some of them are thinking about going back to remote now. But we've kind of left it, so far, we've kind of left it optional up to the chair, but
Made it so that people, Lifty, can come from home.
Or, you know, if members wanted to attend from home as well, under the open meeting law, extensions through April. So we do have the mechanism to continue to meet whoever we need to, once we watch the numbers.
Thank you.
So kind of another question follow-up, that some of Mayor McValley manager, Mayor McValley, Chamber of Commerce managers and mayors breakfasts this Friday morning. Anything, any word on that being postponed or canceled?
So we actually were just going back and forth with the chamber about that, and they were talking about, we were asking if they would be willing to mandate masks, and they have, we haven't heard yet, so. But some of us are a little bit nervous, because, you know, we're mandating masks in all of our buildings, you know, and even our conferences coming up, they're COVID testing us before we are allowed to go in there, and so it's a little nerve-wracking for most of us, so.
Can we just postpone?
It seems to me that would be a simpler thing to do.
It's how last year was.
Right. I'm not sure I'm going to, I'm going to go, because I think it's very hard for us to say, you know, please don't gather, you know, please wear a mask all the time, and then be in a place where people are not.
Well, if you do make the decision not to go, which I would support you a hundred percent, but could you let us know?
I certainly will, yes.
Please, to work for
You'll stay home, too.
It cuts up very much.
Thank you.
Actually really want to go.
It's a hard decision to make, right, because I love the chamber, and Joe is so supportive of all of us and of me, and, but, you know, we don't, last thing you want to do is bring anything back to town hall or any of our families.
Right, I'm a super spreader, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
It's tough right now.
It is.
Yep.
And it's a different location, too, this year.
Yes.
It is. You don't want to be driving to the other place.
No.
Have to go the exact opposite.
Alright, so January twenty-fourth, our next meeting, seven o'clock, and we'll keep an eye on the numbers and go from there. I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion and second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.